I'd like to call this meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order for October 10th, 2017. Present is Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, sorry, I just drove in from Rochester. Ms. Pitko, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. John Llewellyn, I think we're expecting the other three board members, but we'll see. If I could have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(applause) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we start the new year with new student reps, so first, welcome. Normally, you make comments without a lot of comment about yourselves, but maybe for the first meeting, if you could, when you make a comment, introduce yourself, so that the Board of Education members will get to know you a little bit better. And, so, who, we normally alternate between schools, so Ludlow's on the list first, so why doesn't Ludlow start?
Sure.
And introduce yourselves.
So, I'm Molly Baker, I'm a senior at Ludlow, and so, this month, I guess, or these past months, we had Jim Heims come to Ludlow to speak, which was really cool, and the AP government students coordinated that, and we're continuing the Give campaign. We're hosting Deirdre Daly on October 19th and 20th, the Attorney of State, and also tomorrow night, we're going to the Board of Ed debate at Ward to ask questions to the candidates from the students at Ludlow. And then, also, tomorrow is the, is PSAT day, so juniors and sophomores are taking the PSAT, while freshmen have a, an assembly about hate and bullying. So, this is our third year doing that, and every year, the kids report that the message that they get through that assembly is really powerful, so hopefully, the same goes for this year.
Okay, this past Thursday, the Ludlow
Yes, you should recognize that you are on TV for all time, and you should use the mic and introduce yourself when you speak.
Hi, I'm Isabella Schichter, I'm also a senior at Ludlow. This past Thursday, the music department held their first concert, which included every musical ensemble, and this is our second year doing it, and it's been a hit both times. The parents always report that they enjoy meeting and listening to all the different ensembles that you don't normally hear in one concert, and the music teachers enjoy it as well. Our new choir director, Mrs. Pine, said she herself thought was a great way to be introduced to the entire music department, and a great kind of teaser of what's to come in the remaining concerts. And additionally, our raft club recently, last week, took a field trip to the Center for Family Justice, and got to learn about how victims of domestic abuse can seek counseling and legal help, as well as economic opportunities while they transition out of an abusive relationship. And this assembly also included some information from the Camp Hope Project, which helps children who are victims of abusive relationships or abusive families, help them live somewhat normal lifestyles with opportunities to see their friends, and participate in other extracurricular activities that they wouldn't otherwise have the opportunity to.
Thank you. Do we have questions for our students from Ludlow? Any questions for our students from Ludlow? If not, thank you very much. Ward?
I'm Ted Orbin, I'm a senior at Ward, I'm on the lacrosse team, the ski team, just a little about me. So, we've had three senior dress-up days so far, every Friday, kind of in the fall, in the first couple of weeks of school, we have dress-up days. So, we've had Decades Day, we've had Occupation Day, and we've also had TV/Movie Day, so that was just kind of some school spirit, like to start it off, to start off the school year right. And then, this Thursday, we've been selling pink shirts through our house councils for breast cancer awareness. I know Dr. Jones bought one, and so, in the lunch waves during school on Thursday, we're going to be taking pictures in the courtyard of everybody during, like who's in that lunch wave, wearing the pink shirts, so that'll be very cool. As a senior, I'm going through the college process and everything right now, and so are most other seniors at Ward. So, Ms. Lala, in the College Career Center, has been bringing in a lot of college representatives for visits every day, I think we had four today. And so, it's a great opportunity to kind of go in and talk with the reps, introduce yourself, because a lot of the times, they're the ones that are reading our applications. And I know that, for me, as a senior, I like to go to a lot of the games and stuff, so it is very cool to see that this fall, a lot of people are going to the games, a lot more than I've ever noticed. So, just the participation at the games, and also sports in general, has increased, because I know that 500-plus people actually went out for sports this fall at Ward.
I'm Paul Rivera, I'm a junior here at Ward, and I participate in the TV program, along with Ted. One of the things that we are looking forward to here at Ward is our homecoming dance this Saturday, after our homecoming game at 11:00. I know it should be a fun time, a lot of kids are excited, gotten things in order. And, a new bonus to the Ward layout this year would be what we call the Learning Commons, which has been a modification to our library. There's changes in the layout, we have a new recording studio now, which I know there are plenty of students who are looking forward to record music videos and of the such like that. And, now, we have to sign in there with IDs, so feels a little bit more secure in the library. We are reconstructing the tennis courts, and the solar panels were made above our parking lot, plenty of students enjoy that, especially because it can block their cars from rain, which is very popular, which is very important to them. And, we are looking forward to our pep rally on Friday, where all our fall sports are going to rally in the gymnasium in front of everybody. It's one of the examples of our dynamic part of our high school. And, of course, as my Ludlow counterparts have said, PSATs are tomorrow for 10th and 11th graders, and we're all studying hard for that.
Thank you. Any questions for our representatives from Ward? Ms. Maxon Cannelly?
I actually have three questions.
Oh, can I interrupt just for a second?
Sure.
You'll have to get used to the fact that board members may ask you questions, and staff frequently
(laughing) I heard that!
And staff sometimes have a response that says, "I don't know, but I'll get back to you." That's an acceptable answer as well, but, so, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Just trying to give their money's worth for you showing up tonight. My first question was actually to the Ludlow representatives, I didn't know if Ward was going to mention this or not, but the assembly with Jim Heims, their Ward students were there as well, correct?
Yeah, we had kids from
Microphone.
Oh, we had kids from Ward, and also, some kids from Central, and kids from Trumbull, and all over Weston, I know was there too.
Was there any opportunity for the students to have any form of dialogue, or was it simply, go for the speaker and then leave?
So, it was a forum, and so, it was all, it was almost all questions to Jim Heims by all the students, and like, each school had like, a specific amount of questions.
Okay, but the students themselves, there was an opportunity for the students to interact about issues, it was just interacting with the speaker?
Yeah.
Okay, I know that was a real focus last year of the two high schools, to have more interactive events. And then, I also had a question for you, because it's something that's going to be on our agenda tonight, and I'm just throwing it out there, and then would love to hear back from you at a later meeting. We do, as part of our District Improvement Plan, a survey of graduates, because if you can imagine, of all the data points that we have, that's the one data point I was personally most excited about, ultimately, did we do our job here? And, I'd be very curious to get your thoughts on how we can improve the participation rate of the seniors. So, it, what'll happen is that, in the, I think it's the spring of the year, that it goes out to the graduates, that it gets mailed to them. So, when you are a freshman in college, in the spring and you come home, there will be a survey waiting for you. And, I think we had about 85 respondents out of a class of 380 at Ward, which obviously gives valuable information, but a lot more response would give a lot more valuable information. So, I'd love, I'm just throwing it out there to the, to the four of you, that I'd love to hear back at some point, you know, some ideas on how we can improve that participation rate, because your feedback, obviously, if we did the job, we want to know what we did well, and any place we fell short. And then, I'll just put my personal plea in there, is I'd love to have gotten some sports updates out of this, but I'm, don't know if you have anything to, all of a sudden, I'm seeing big smiles, so I don't know if you have anything to report.
The sports are average, that's what he told me.
(laughing)
That's all I got.
I can't speak for them, but I know our Ward sports have been pretty good this fall. I know the girls' soccer are doing really well. The boys' soccer have tied, I think, four games, so, kind of iffy there, but the, also, the boys' football has been, I think this is like, one of their most successful seasons that they've ever had. So, we obviously look forward to the Thanksgiving game, and we also have a bunch of Ward/Ludlow games coming up in the next two weeks, field hockey's this Thursday.
Soccer next Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday, and then volleyball next Monday.
Thank you.
Cross-country's doing pretty good, too.
Any other questions? Ms. Lou McCormick?
One more question for you. At the presentation with Heims, what kinds of questions were students posing, just out of curiosity?
Um, hmm, they were, they were like, a very, like, types of questions. There was a lot, just about like, things going on in DC right now. There were a lot of questions on DACA and Title IX, and just like, questions like that.
Thank you. Anything else? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly brought up one point, and that's a comment about the District Improvement Plan. Although frequently, your comments are based on activities that are happening at the two high schools, please feel free, as you get the agenda, if you have a viewpoint that you'd like to share with us, from a student perspective, to blend that into your comments during student reports. Frequently, we ask people if they want to comment on a voting item, to wait for the item to come up on the agenda. You've got important things, like studies and whatnot, to do, so if you have a comment that you want to make, whether it's a voting item or discussion item, feel free to include it in your student report section. So, having said that, thank you for coming, feel free to stay till the very end of the meeting, or feel free to move off as you wish.
Thank you.
Onto public comment. This is the time for the public to make any comments they wish on items on the agenda for discussion. We do have an item on the agenda for a vote. If you choose to make your comment during this period, you, you won't be allowed to come back up and take a second bite of the apple on the voting item, so choose whether you want to say now, say your piece now, or you want to wait for the voting item. Having said that, anybody wish to come forward and speak on an agenda item that's in front of you? Seeing nobody come forward, thank you very much. Old Business, Adoption of Policy 5113, recommended motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 5113, attendance, excuses, dismissal. Ms. Maxon Cannelly and Ms. Pitko, do you have any comments that you wish to make on that particular policy?
No, we, I received no questions, so I assume everyone's clear.
Any questions from board members on adoption of policy 5113? Seeing none, the public is allowed to comment on voting items, so let me go out to the public and invite anybody that wishes to make a comment about adoption of policy 5113, attendance, excuses, and dismissal, to come forward at this time, state your name and address. Okay, then, back to the board. If we're ready to act, all in favor on the recommended motion that the Board of Education adopt policy 5113, attendance, excuses, and dismissal, please raise your hand. It's unanimous with nine people attending, thank you very much. New Business, District Improvement Plan Annual Update, Dr. Jones, this is enclosure number one, so I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Jones.
Great, thank you very much. On the first couple of pages, this is the Priorities for Excellence, which the board has already looked at and discussed and voted on, as well as the Staff Work Plan. So, I'm going to go ahead and start on page seven. Obviously, you don't want me to read the whole thing to you, so I'm just going to hit a couple of the highlights. On the very first item, the World Language Program, it is reflected in there that we didn't do what we had hoped to do this school year, just as a reminder, owing to, because of the budget, and because of the budget constraint. So, we'll be looking at that again, this school year, as far as what our World Language Program, in elementary, what the board, the desire of the board's going to be, given the budget situation. On number two, we did work hard on our social studies curriculum, and developing those units for third through fifth grade that are currently being implemented, so we're excited about the work that we have done there. And, I will say, I think also, the realignment of our administrative positions, it has also been a benefit there, because we have Greg Paglis, who is working all the way down in our lower, lower elementary now, and having that K through 12 focus has been a real benefit. On page nine, I'll just point out that we've done a lot of work on number five, with our transition programming, and this is looking at when our students move from five to six, when they're moving from eight to nine. And also, what's not really listed in here, we've also worked on our ECC transitions, going into our elementary schools, and we've done a lot of work on that, much better communication, I think staff would tell you, of getting our teachers, not only discussing and talking about students, but also having, for instance, elementary teachers go up and look at middle school classrooms and vice versa, so that we're actually understanding where you're sending your kids, and where they're coming from, and getting a little bit more understanding with that. So, there's been some great work in the transition. On the next page, on page 10, I'll just highlight number six, and this was looking at High School Performance Task, but even more than that, the Academic Expectations rubric, and it is one of the addendums here, on the back of the plan, so that you can have a look at where that document is, is as of today, because it is a living, breathing document, and there's a team from Ludlow and Ward staff that actually are working on that, continuing to review, listening to staff input, what that looks like. The other thing in number six that you'll notice is, in about the second, the second paragraph down, where we're looking at that capstone concept, which is the way it was originally listed in the District Improvement Plan, it's really, they're calling it Mastery-Based Assessment now, so the door has really been widened in Connecticut by some of the changes that they have made with graduation requirements, and we're going to be looking at that deeply this year, going into next year, because we have a lot of flexibility, it could look like a project, it could be a class, it, we just, we have flexibility that we didn't necessarily think we were going to have, to do some really neat things. Next, I'm just going to turn to page 12, if you flip over to 14, and this is some of the work that we've been doing at Walter Fitzgerald, and I really want to compliment the staff there, and Gail as well, the principal, on really looking at project-based learning, and how they can make learning really highly engaging for students, relevant and real-world experience, and they're doing some phenomenal work there. They also infused Chromebooks, and so, they are probably, I would say, one of our more progressive areas, where our students are really starting to look at, like, going paperless, having real-time research at their fingertips, so some great work going on there at Walter Fitzgerald. And, on page 13, the next page over, looking at the hiring process, on page 20, I know that we have put in the protocol to help us hire more consistently, and really aim for getting those high-quality professionals, and I think staff would tell you, we feel like that we're doing that, we're getting, we're hiring some outstanding, outstanding teachers, and we feel like that that's working well for us. On page 14, the next page over, expanding our mental health options, I think this is one of those components that we, we talk a lot about, everybody knows that there's a need, especially with our young people in high school, and sometimes we don't talk enough about what we're doing. We are really looking at the Effective School Solutions Data, trying to decipher, are we getting out of that program exactly what we need for our young people, and I know the board knows this year, we also are starting the DBT, which is another layer of really talking about mental health, but that's really, you know, looking forward. But, again, we're really studying that, we have components in place, so now, how do we really enhance everything to be the very best for our students? On page 15, the next page over, just to also compliment on page 28, this is work that's happened, did I say number, page 28?
Page, yeah.
Number 28, on page 15. Just to compliment, some of the work that's happened at Central Office, in order to help us really get into the 21st century and try to automate, it's not an easy task, it is very difficult to try to automate items in the school district, not only just implementing the systems, rolling the volumes of data over to automate, but also just getting staff comfortable. And, one of the things that we did is our employee self-service, you know, where people can see, you know, their pay stubs and have instant access, and, and that's something that was new for us. We also, implementing paperless workflows, then that's something we want to continue to do, and continue to grow with that. On the next page, on 16, just I'll highlight the Racial and Balance Plan, again, we've put a lot of work in on the Racial and Balance Plan, and trying to make sure that we're being thoughtful about what we've presented to the state. We did follow up with a couple of questions, we haven't heard back since our last visit in September, but I did check in with them about two weeks ago, and it's with technical assistance right now, and we'll have a phone call coming up shortly. On 30, is looking at enforcement of residency requirements. That's something, again, that we have tightened up quite a bit, trying to really make sure that, you know, everybody that's attending our school system legally resides in Fairfield. That's a tough one, it is, it's a, it could be 14 people working full-time, because we're a great school district, and people will do anything to get their children here. One of the components that I think you'll see, probably in the next 12 to 24 months, is we're going to have to consider, in this area, what's the next step, and that is, we have got to ask for utility bills beyond the first time somebody enrolls, because it's, we do not go back, we're like, the only, one of the only school districts in this, in the Fairfield area, that don't actually do a check at some point in time, whether that's when everybody starts middle school, so all sixth grade families reestablish residency. We generally pick it up if it's on a, like, if somebody has moved, if they've changed addresses, but this is an area we want to continue to grow and enhance, because it makes a big difference for us. On page 17, this is where much of the data will start, and as a reminder to the board, at our, at a further meeting, will be our data presentation, so you'll still see some blanks in here, and that's why. We don't have necessarily all of the data, and when we really drill down to this data, we want all of our directors here, so that they can answer questions in all of their core content areas. I'll just point out a couple of things. The first one, on the postgraduate survey indicator, I think we kind of alluded to that, the scores that we got this year, we have Wards represented on here, but Ludlow's, and it was just human error, we actually uploaded the data for our current seniors, so they were taking the survey while they were still a senior in high school. So, that, it, it's not valid data, so we'll have to wait and look at that again in the future, so I just want to point that out. Graduation rate, those sorts of things, we're still waiting on. I will point out on the next page, on page 18, our career in technical education, slight, slightly up, but pretty much, you know, sitting flat, and again, with percentage like that, with almost 71%, that's pretty high, and we may not see that actually, you know, get to 75, because students are choosing those electives that they want to be in. On page 19, these I will probably have out to you within the next day or two. There's something interesting going on with our World Language scores, and we're not sure what it is, so I asked them to go back and recalculate and look at those again. Almost all of them have dropped slightly, or significantly, and what we're trying to figure out, some of them are very small cohorts of children, and we perhaps shouldn't have actually maybe put that score in here last year, because the group was so small, but we're trying to figure out exactly what that is, so I can message correctly to the board on that. On page 20, which is the SAT, that's always an area of interest, and you can see, again, holding strong with our at or above college benchmark, and that's number 12 on page 20. And, then also, there's the Free and Reduced number as well, and you've got Language Arts and Math, which, again, they're strong scores. Probably one of the areas that I wish we had data on, which is page 21, and you probably won't hear about this at the, at the presentation, because we just really don't have great data, and this is our extracurricular participation. I think it is a huge, important area for high school, especially where we want, in middle school, where we want students engaged in their school. But, as I dug into this, we were literally hand calculating, trying to go through 3,000 students, trying to figure out this data, and I don't want to bring anything to the board that, number one, we don't think is correct, and number two, if we're having to pull staff away from working with our children, and doing the work they need to do for days on end, trying to, trying to get this. But, we will looking, looking forward, see if we can figure out a better system, when kids are enrolling for activities, is there not a database somehow, that would pull that for us, or through IC, so we're going to explore that further. Number 15 is the Connecticut Physical Fitness Assessment, again, that, our target is 70, so you'll see, in eighth grade, they hit the target, but those are strong scores, again. Behind that, the attendance, we're still waiting on that one. And then, the other section that I think the board has interest in, is the, the section that starts with Attachment 1, and that is 20, page 24, it doesn't actually have the number on the attachment, so, you can see 23, and turn that over. And, we gave these to you by all of the subject areas, so that you can look at where our scores are for Fairfield, where we are for the state of Connecticut, and then, of course, looking at the national, and looking at the percentage that falls within that three, four, or five, which is considered that passing area. One of the pieces that I try to look at is really, what is the percentage that are actually taking the assessment? And, you know, in some areas, you'll see it lower, some you'll see it higher, but I know, for instance, in math, and you can ask Dr. Rasmussen about this when he's here for the next presentation, he felt like, he asked some of the students why they didn't take the AP Calculus test, and it's because they feel like it's, they're not going to get credit for it, if it's in their major line of study, it doesn't necessarily help them at college, and it's a lot of stress and pressure. If they have several AP tests, they'd rather put the time in, and the money, yes, and the money, and if you, you're in four or five rigorous classes, why not focus on the three that may really matter for college credit? And so, that's part of the thinking there, but it's just, it's interesting data, and again, our students perform exceptionally well, and it kind of gives you the student numbers, how many are taking the test, and the information that you want there. If you flip back behind the colored charts, because I know you'll take these home and want to dig in and look at all of these, if you haven't already, the Academic Expectations rubric is in here for you. And, just as a reminder, this is, a lot of work has gone into this. The high school's done tremendous work, and I can really see this in the future, being a K-12, something that could be very powerful for us, to help, give us a framework, but it is a living, breathing document, they're still working on it, because staff are, it's, this is very much staff-driven, and I had, at the end of last year, I had a great opportunity to sit in for about half a day, as the team was there and working on, on this, and all of the kind of components that go inside it, and they're really committed to this work, great conversations. So, you can see the rubric work, that's behind there. And then, last but not least, we have the SBACK, and again, you can, that's broken down, so you can see how we did at each grade level, and you can actually see the Fairfield state, and then, the difference. And basically, when you're looking at the SBACK scores, if you just take that top little blue square on the left, what you really want to see on that Level 1, you want to see a score there, if it's in the negative, that's okay, because that means we didn't have a whole lot of kids at the lower level. We really want to see the positives up there on the threes and fours, so when you look at the bottom of that little blue square, if you don't see a negative, that's a good thing, that's where we're outperforming. But, they will drill down on all of this information farther for you, when they do their presentation for you from the directors, but, again, you know, we should be very proud of the work that our teachers are doing, and our students' and their performance, because they're doing some excellent work.
Okay, quick survey, do the board members have questions they wish to address? This is Lou McCormick, followed by Ms. Carnell.
Just taking a quick look at these charts, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So, when I take a look at the Calculus AB page, it's not numbered, but the calculus chart, for AB, AP, I guess, right? Is this right, when I, am I interpreting this right? So, in 2012, we had 72% of the kids taking the test get fives on it.
Are you looking at Calculus AB?
Yeah. Am I looking at that right? Did I read that right? But, in 2017, only 5% got fives?
Oh, I see, yes, yes, that is correct, and if you look down at the bottom, I think it kind of goes along with what I was talking about earlier in math, there were 65 tested, and then you'll see in 17, there were 38. How many were, the enrollment wasn't that different, but students are choosing not to take the test. You know, we don't, we don't make them take the test, and we don't pay for it, so if they don't see value in taking the assessment, they probably are not going to pay for it and take it.
I see that, but I see that, but then we went from zero getting twos and ones to 32% and 16% of those who did take it. That is a dramatic shift. So in 2012, we had 72% get fives and 0% get ones and twos. And we've inverted now to 5% getting fives and 30, and whatever, what is that, 48% getting twos and ones? So if I'm reading that right, that is, I guess that definitely deserves further inquiries to what's going on there. And if I look at the BC, just to say that maybe the AB was an aberration, I look at the BC AP test where the number tested in 2016 and 17 are about constant, right? From 2012, it went from 89% receiving fives and 3% receiving twos and ones to 27% receiving fives in 2017, and over 20% receiving ones and twos. So the trend is somewhat consistent, it seems.
Well.
Wondering why?
Yeah, I mean, I think there are a lot, there are a lot of things we'd have to dig in and look. One thing is, we have open enrollment. That does make a difference because there are students who can make a one or a two on a Calculus AB or BC exam and go to college and be absolutely highly successful and be our doctors of the future. This is one point in time, and for some of these students, taking an AP test, especially if they're taking several, they're all, you know, consecutive days, it's very stressful, they're very long, and we just, it could be two things. It could be, one, we just didn't perform as well. Number two, we're trying to get our enrollment up, and we have open enrollment, we're allowing more students to take rigorous exams that maybe they haven't taken before. So it could be a variety of factors.
I get it, but you know, the trend from 2012 to 2017 is almost straight line. It's not as if it's a jagged line with an unusual aberration. It goes from 89%, almost a straight trend, down to 27% with 37 kids taking it to 52, so slightly more kids taking it. And so it's more, more of a robust number, actually, the 2017, there were fewer kids taking it in 2012. So I don't know. I think that definitely deserves a good take, review. I mean, this is clearly something I guess you'll do when you do the curriculum review, et cetera, but, you know, that kind of mirrors what's going on in science. If I look at science, which is biology I'm looking at, in 2012, we had 53% of the kids taking it receive fives, but there were only 38 kids taking it. And now we have 138 kids taking it, but we have only 7% of the kids receiving fives. So again, I mean, we have the bulk of them receiving threes and fours, and so it just seems like the curve shape has completely changed. And is that something that is an objective of ours? Is this what we wanted to happen? Is this what we expected to happen? And are we going to try to adjust it, or is this kind of what we were aiming for?
Well, I wasn't here, like, to know what we were aiming for. I think what we're aiming for is for every student to be as successful as they are capable of being. And on one, on any given year, you have different groups of students who are taking exams. And we certainly go in and we do look at trends, and I do know Dr. Rasmussen had commented about the math, for sure, and that he was looking at that trend. We can certainly go in and dig a little bit deeper, but our goal is really for all of our kids to be successful. And, you know, when you look on that far right-hand side, I'm looking at biology, and you look at the number of fours in the country, which was 6%, and you look at the five, sorry, the fives, and then you look at the fours at 21%, we're at 43. And we should be celebrating that still because this is, when you look at the state or the country level, you're talking about some of the top private schools in the United States who are selective, and the students that they choose to enroll and take these exams. So the performance, I still think, is very strong, and we should be proud of that.
Other questions, or Ms. Lou McCormick? Other questions, or can I go?
No, I'm, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Carnell.
Through the chair to Dr. Jones. On page 20, we talk about the SAT, and, you know, we have these stats for 15, 16, 17, well, 15, 16, 16, 17, and then what we target for. And for example, it says 84.8%. Is that, what number is 84.8% of? It looks like we may be missing one more calculation to really understand the table.
Yeah, they pulled this straight from the report, so I'd have to go back to the actual reporting data. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to try to guess at that for you.
Okay, so can we just get a follow-up on that, maybe? Okay, and then?
Excuse me. The 84.8%, you mean that's in terms of, of the cut score? I think, I, I actually forget the score. Isn't it around a, I'm going to make this up, 460 or something? So this would be 84 point, 84.8% hitting that mark that's been designated by the state. I just don't remember what the mark is. I don't know if Mr. Cummings does.
We can get that and get it out to you, to the board.
Yeah, no, I think that would be helpful because I think I understand what you're saying, but I think it would be helpful. It looks like there's some sort of number missing to really understand the chart. And I guess to stand this for one, one moment. That's a very big target increase in the math. Is there any particular things that are being done to help that? And I know you mentioned the curriculum leader clearly, but is, you know, is it working with the teachers more, or, excuse me, or looking at a different curriculum? What is, what is the hope? Because that's a really large increase as, as a target.
Yeah, and I will say, and I'm going to be real honest, that's been part of the challenge this year and, for me, in looking at all of this data in the District Improvement Plan. When you ask questions about why is that target the target, I'm not sure anybody really knows exactly why the target is exactly the target. I think the target was set because people felt like the board wanted high performance and wanted to see that, and so we put in what we think was a high target. Can we hit that or not? We don't know. And because we only have the two years of data, we're going to continue to work on improving math, for instance, for all children, K-12.
Thank you. On page 13, I guess at the bottom, it's where it says resources. I guess I'm really trying to understand 20 and 21, and I know that you didn't write these, but it says successfully utilized in 16 to 17 hiring process, and I'd really like to understand that. What was utilized, and what was the success of it, and the percentage, and how many teachers were hired? I really, this is very vague to me, and I don't know what it's, what it says successfully utilized. I don't know who answered that and under what basis they were making that decision.
This actually came from Ann Leffert before Ann, before she left, and she felt like the administrative team especially were being much more consistent in their hiring, really vetting candidates, that we are not having, as many teachers, for instance, struggle in the first year with us because we are, we have a, a great process in place. But we can certainly get you more information about that actual protocol component.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm really not sure what process. I've met with her in the past, and, you know, now she's lucky she's in retirement, but I'm not sure what, what she used at all to qualify that, and what is being done, you know, continually to work with new teachers, to work with new administration, to work with even building subs, or people that come in and run a class for six weeks due to maternity leave. So I'd really like some breakdown in this, and I've been asking for it, I think, through any venue I can, so that would really be helpful.
Yeah, and I might just point out, I didn't mention them, but 17, 18, and 19 above, that 20, are, are some of those targeted components that we have been working on. 17, when we're looking at aligning teacher goals to their site improvement plan, getting everybody connected, that's also having that collaborative support with your colleagues, ensuring that administrators have a successful first year, and really working with them. A lot of work went into that also last year. And then also the Leadership Academy, and making sure that our new teachers are actually coming and, and working with Central Office staff to support them, making sure they understand the curriculum, making sure that they have a mentor, enhancing all of those components.
They be working with the curriculum leaders, and if they come to, you know, Central Office, or who would they in particularly be working with?
Our curriculum leaders actually, and the, and the directors now, actually do a lot of observations for us and for the, for the team, and do some really great work in giving coaching and feedback to some of our newer teachers.
You mean by going in and observing them in the classroom?
Yes.
One of the things, and it seems to be that a lot more of this is geared towards full-time teachers that are hired into the district. What there seems to be very little information on it, and I've looked at your old district just to see if you had given some brilliant suggestions, is in terms of subs or building subs or people, how qualified do they have to be to teach a difficult subject matter? And there doesn't seem to be a lot of data on that. I called Cabe, I did a lot of, to get around. So is there something that we have, or can we understand how our policy works here, or how it's implemented, or?
Yeah, I, you know, I'll, I'll be brief, but I know you're not going to like my answer. There is, there is, there is no magic bullet. And, you know, right now, if we have a job like physics, we're, we are absolutely ecstatic if we find an amazing physics teacher, because the pool is very small for a full-time position. So if you have a position like that, and somebody goes out in the middle of the year for an illness or, or whatever, it is incredibly difficult to find somebody for a substitute in a position like that who is really highly qualified in high-level content. Most of them are either already in positions, or they don't want to be working every day. They may be a great sub, but they don't want the commitment for two or three months. So what we do is, we try to recruit our subs, you know, and a lot of times, it's networking, knowing somebody who's just retired, that we can call up and get them willing to come back, but it's, it's not easy, and it's not just Fairfield, it, it's that way across the country. We're, we have a teacher shortage right now, so you can imagine, in the substitute area, it's even more difficult.
And I'm sure it's, it's more extreme in some, some subjects than others. But is that something that can also be added to or looked at in addition for the District Improvement Plan in terms of full-time teachers and maybe other teachers that step into the classroom?
Let me comment if you don't mind.
Can I just finish one more question, or you want to comment on that?
Comment on that question.
Please.
As the board may remember that we had agreed to have two full years of implementation, and then the board would schedule time to talk about what changes would they like to see in the revised, if you will, District Improvement Plan. We are planning on putting this back on the agenda at the November board meeting so that board members could comment, and members of the public could certainly comment, because it'll be a discussion item, on things that they would like to see changed. So I would answer your question that the first opportunity will be at the November board meeting.
Thank you. Now I forgot my next question. You did that on purpose.
My apologies.
Thank you. I remembered that. In terms of also new, new teachers coming into the district and being, you know, mentored and things of that nature, which I think is incredibly important, do we have a way that it's logged? Who comes in and mentors, sits in, evaluates them? You know, how, how is that done in our district?
We do, actually, and it has to be. I mean, we, we upload that even through the team process, and we can have staff share that with you, maybe one-on-one.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Other questions? I'll just go around the horn. Ms. Pitco, followed by Mrs. Maxon Connolly and Mr. Llewellyn.
Okay, so through the chair to Dr. Jones. If you could go to page 11, number 10, says develop a middle school advisory program, and what you wrote is, the advisory program is working well. So I'm just curious, because I just did my thesis on Naviance.
Yeah.
And my understanding is Naviance was the software we use to help with the tools necessary for the students, for student success plans, but nowhere in it did I learn anything about how it works with the advisory program. So maybe just a little insight into how maybe we developed an advisory program?
Yeah, and I don't know, Mr. Cummings, if you can speak to that probably better than I, or not? No? Okay, we better, we'll bring that up, I think so. My understanding is, each middle school's a little bit different.
Okay, one more question. Page 23. I know we skipped over this real quick.
Yeah.
It jumped out at me when I first read this. Says, "The administration recommends the following changes in the District Improvement Plan. Number two, do not utilize formative assessments as part of District Improvement Plan reporting. The focus should be on norm reference and scientifically valid data." And I'm just curious about this because the District Improvement Plan talks about performance-based assessments, project-based learning, and then we put that in there. And so that's confusing to me.
I think, I think the key is, performance-based assessments can be really powerful, and we want authentic teaching happening in the classroom. I think the difference is what we're reporting to the board and all of the data points that are in this plan that staff really feel like takes them off kilter as far as really being able to authentically work in the classroom. And I, that's what this is really referencing, that when we went through as an administrative team and looked at all of the data we had last year, first of all, we didn't really have a great data system, and, and the amount of time that, that we pulled staff away from work just to pull all of those data points was unbelievable. I mean, it was really difficult and challenging. And simplifying that, and one way to do that is letting the formative assessment stay in the classroom with the teachers, where we feel like it really belongs, not necessarily at the district level where S-Back is really important, I think SAT is important, we also have STAR, which is now a norm reference assessment, but it allows these components to stay in the classroom.
Okay, the only reason that makes me nervous is because I look at our S-Back scores, and then I'm wondering how you're doing, number four, reduce data points to allow more focused targeting of instruction.
Because it's drilling all the way down to individual children, and we're allowing our SRBI teams, allowing our teachers, allowing our principals, our headmasters to work with staff on all of that data inside the school, but that's not necessarily data points that we feel should be part of a District Improvement Plan that we're bringing to the board every year on formative assessments.
I completely understand your point. I think what I'm trying to say is that more data points show a student growth performance. And maybe that S-Back isn't going to be the, and all be all of our student performance.
Well, and I think that's what our teachers are doing. Our teachers are using multiple data points. I mean, that's, that is great teaching, but what our teachers do in the classroom and what we report at the board level, I think, is different. And I think one is, what is the district reporting that we're doing to report out, and what are we allowing our teachers to do in the classroom to do their craft and use multiple data points depending on the student at times?
Okay. Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
And I'll try to go through mine quickly. Some of them actually will come up under the budget discussion, but on page 10, starting on page 10, I was wondering if you could explain more of what you mean about the capstone possibly being incorporated into the schedule and how quickly you see something like that needing to happen?
Well, we are, we actually, both of the high schools are part of a seminar. Mr. Cummings is going, I'm going, several of us are, where we're looking at all the graduation requirements at the, and it's with a state-level team that we're attending throughout this whole school year. This is one component of that with the graduation requirements, and I think it will be lots of discussion and looking at what's happening around the country, because this is not a new concept, and what really is going to fit for our two high schools and for Fairfield. And when you talk about a capstone, it can look like a personal project. What does that personal project look like? It depends on how we design that. And when this, when the state was first talking about this, it looked more like a traditional capstone. Now they're actually saying you could offer a course, a capstone course if you want it, not necessarily called capstone, but a project-based course where students are taking as elective and they're, you know, either doing independent research. And in some regards, if you look at what happens like on IB, International Bachelor Laureate, where students have community action service projects, it could look like that, but the door's wide open. They haven't defined it, and they're not intending to. So what that end of kind of senior year could look like, and it could be the end of the junior year, that may be better than doing the senior year, and maybe senior year, it looks like something else. The door is wide open.
And how quickly do you see that issue needing to be something that we're addressing? I mean, because I, obviously, we've always said that it's beyond the Policy Committee, but when do you see this being addressed?
Yeah, I'm trying to think when the actual date. We have two years, I think it's, is it two years? Do you know, Mr. Cummings?
For the class of 2023.
Yeah, so.
Does he want to clarify with the assumption? Just please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. The graduation requirements have changed for the current, beginning with the current seventh grade, so that's a class of 2023. And as Dr. Jones mentioned, the specific reference to capstone has been taken out, and capstone now essentially becomes a list of possibilities around mastery-based learning, experiential learning. It has become far more wide open.
But, so our kids, we would like for our children, when they're starting high school and a freshman, to know what the expectation is for graduation. So if they're seventh graders, that means seventh grade, eighth grade, and we would like to have something in place, if, if we can do that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I think we- Well, I think we will doing that. My question is, is that that's obviously starting here and with staff long before then. So my question is that when do you see us, and obviously, you're going to workshops to get further educated on the topic, but when do we actually begin to dig in and do the work of deciding the Fairfield graduation requirements and that policy?
We're starting now.
Yeah, that is, that is happening right now.
So when do you see it involving the board?
I would hope that we'd have to, given the need to get this in front of our, our community, I would hope to have a proposal to the board by the end of this academic year.
Okay, so if I want to follow up on that, should I follow up with Mr. Cummings, or? Yes, okay, thank you.
And as always, if you follow up with Mr. Cummings, as the Chair of the Policy Committee, copy Dr. Jones, so she's aware of the communication.
Will do.
Can I follow up on a capstone question?
Sure.
The state has been known to have these graduation requirements, and then delay it a year, then delay it a year, and then delay it a year, causing school districts to not be sure as to whether they're, they have to implement it, or when, and what. And some school districts have said, forgetting what the state is doing, we like an idea within the graduation requirements, and we're going to pursue it whether the state requires it or not. Can I assume that in November, we might get some inclination from the staff as to whether the capstone is one of those? You're going to pursue it irregardless of whether the state makes a change next spring?
I believe in November, we can certainly share with you some sense of how we want to be able to structure essentially the entire pre-K-12 system, so that there's an incremental approach to readying students for the demands of some type of high school experience that would come in either junior or senior year.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Maxon Connolly, you have other questions?
Yep. I was wondering, and I know we've been told this, because I know ELL was one of the areas where you had been looking to have leadership, and I was, so this is on number eight. Who is now heading that up, and what kind of work is that entailing in terms of having actual leadership for that program?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Cummings.
Hi again. That, that work, Ms. Kairala and Mr. Chiappetta are taking that work on through their work as leaders of language arts, K-5 and in 612. Ms. Minor and myself are also doing that work. Ultimately, the ELL program falls under my jurisdiction, as it did when I was Director of Elementary Ed. It's really now expanded. One of the things we will be talking about in November, and certainly in ensuing months, is the demands of that program in the population, and you'll certainly be hearing about it at budget time as well, as we try to approach and address those issues very responsibly and proactively.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering about, because I know we've been trying to set aside money for materials or whatever, but, you know, now we have, but it does sound like there are four people in charge of pulling together all this?
There are many cooks in this kitchen, yes.
Okay, all right, well, we're spending a lot of time. All four of you lined up there. Next was on page 11. This was just a quick comment. Completely endorse that idea that it's time for the minis to go for the non-AP science courses, for a variety of reasons, but just wanted to put that word in there. Down, I don't remember why I circled that, so. Onto page 12. I was curious if you could speak to, if there's any impressions from staff on why we don't have any outside tuition students taking place at the Walter Fitzgerald campus? Because that was something we obviously debated at great length, and it's been a while.
Yeah, I'm just going to give you my, what I think is my view, because I haven't been here that long. I don't think we're recruiting. I don't think that we've really had a recruitment effort. And coming from a system where we actually took tuition students in middle school, high school, you know, we had to have a recruiting kind of plan in order to let people know what you had available in order to get those tuition students, and we really haven't done that so, so far.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't even, I don't think that even the superintendent's organization, that group, has talked about who has which programs available for different districts. We actually have a meeting this Friday where that will be brought up for the first time.
Okay, thank you. The one right below that regarding the instructional rounds, the way I'm reading this, it sounds like it's only administrators who are now going on these?
What we have done on the instructional rounds, the actual rounds, which is what we traditionally have had in the plan, is really left up to the principal. The ones, there are some principals that are very, very committed to getting their staff covered, it's just part of what they do and how they operate. Some of them will do it with some staff, not all staff. What we're really focused on this year is our walkthroughs as an administrative staff, making sure that we are going pre-K through 12, getting our high school principals, headmasters, down into elementary, getting our elementary folks into middle schools and high schools. And we've already, we have started those, and getting great feedback, actually. It's amazing what, what you learn just by looking at the vertical alignment pre-K through 12, especially if you're like a high school person, you haven't really been in elementary. It's, and the same way for elementary when they go to high school. You just don't realize the depth and the breadth of the curriculum until you actually see it in action. So that's been very, it's been great for us. I think we've two weeks, three weeks worth so far?
I guess I've understood it, now, I would understand it from an administrator if it's for purposes of teacher evaluation, but I, or, that's what I'm unclear on. I know from a teacher what the value is in terms of the exercise and seeing what's happening, but taking teachers out of it, what is the value in a high school principal seeing an elementary, and not that, I think it wouldn't be enjoyable, but what is the actual value to their job to be out of their building, seeing an elementary school second-grade class?
Yeah, it's enormously valuable to understand curriculum from the lens of pre-K through 12, because ultimately, I mean, we, and I had this conversation, as a matter of fact, I was doing a round at Osburn Hill last Friday, and I was talking to somebody whose high school, and we were talking about how difficult it is for a high school English teacher, and I don't mean because you're English, I'm just happy what you're talking about, to understand how to teach reading when you have a student in your classroom who has come from a situation where they're reading on a second-grade level, and the English teacher is really an expert at literature, and sometimes when they get a child who doesn't know how to read, they're not really sure how they can differentiate the curriculum to help them with the reading. And when you get to go in and see what a reading, and that's what we were focused on at Osburn Hill, watching their actual Reader's Workshop, it gives people a great understanding of the reading process where, you know, they can look at their high school students, even with a different lens, and start to think about, if we're going to put in a reading strategies or a targeted reading, what does that need to look like? Because those are the skills they're going to have to have, even though they're 15 or 16.
So those administrators are, because again, everything you just described makes sense for me to see a high school English teacher doing that. So what you're describing is that would then shape the professional development that would be brought back to the high school?
It, it does, but it also just helps the administrator growth. You know, for us, for instance, when you do the walkthrough, we have a protocol where administrators aren't taking notes and taking pictures, they're really in observing instruction. And the principal of the building can ask to have a certain focus, so also having your colleagues come in and say, which Frank Arnoe did, I really want you guys to look at Reader's, the Reader Workshop, and give me feedback on what you see. And that was one component of it, which is highly valuable for him, because then we debrief when it, when it's finished. And there, you know, just because you're high school or because you're elementary doesn't mean you don't understand instructionally what you saw, to be able to have great conversations about, gosh, this looked really powerful, how you had time on task, and how the teacher was masterfully had, you know, 24 kids doing 24 different things. So for us, it's also our own personal growth for all of the administrative team.
Okay. On page 13, are these, are the simplified school improvement plans, are those what are going to be loaded? Are, are they already on all of the school websites?
I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm sorry, number 17, the simplified school improvement plans?
I don't think that they're, they're not all quite finished yet, correct? They're still working with staff?
But the ones that will be loaded will be, will represent this simplified version? Okay.
Yeah.
And then one last question, which was for number 23 on page 14. I was wondering, and perhaps we've discussed this before, but what level of professional development is given to staff on how to even use those STAR results? I say this as someone who has been presented with STAR results, and I was presented with them.
Yeah. We've actually, and feel free to come forward, Mr. Cummings, but we've been doing a lot of work on that, and that even drills down into our whole SRBI process, because we do use those results. But I'll let Mr. Cummings, we've brought people in to help us as well and coach us.
We've really worked to spread the capacity of this. As Dr. Jones mentioned, we brought in people from STAR last year to work with principals and the LASs at both the elementary and middle schools, the high school people. This year, the SRBI initiative, particularly at the elementary school at this point, has increased the use of STAR as we begin to truly use it as a benchmark. And with the increased use and expectations around it, we've seen an increase in people's understanding of it. I think part of it is the second-year familiarity and a greater reliance on what the results are telling us, but it's a continual process. It's, you know, you, I would just say, we thought last year we had a data point that looked really interesting, and then as the year went on, we realized that that didn't line up with some of the other data and observations that principals were seeing. So we, we're, on one hand, you listen to what the company representatives tell you, but on the other hand, you certainly have to rely on the experience of the professionals and, and the, you know, and their experiences with the kids. So it's been a continual process, and I imagine it will continue to be a process. As teachers shift grades, as teachers, we hire new teachers, and particularly as we expand SRBI into the middle school and high school, we continue to develop those processes. We'll seek more growth with it.
Because obviously, I would imagine at some point, there's got to be, and I, and maybe this is already being done, but some really comprehensive look at how all of these tests, you know, what are they telling us? What is helping, you know, in terms of the STAR aligning with S-Back, leading up to high school SAT results? I mean, we're using all of these assessments. If they're just pushing teachers in a bunch of different directions, that's not useful. So I'm obviously very happy to hear with what you're saying, that not only are they getting the training, but with greater familiarity, you're owning it yourselves.
The most important thing with any piece of data, whether it's a STAR data or a student work sample, is what do you do as a result of getting it? How does the teacher respond to it? So our training is partly around how to read the results, but that may be 25% of the training. 75% of the training is always, okay, now, how do you react? What does that tell you? How do you, can you possibly group students? How can you group students in your classroom? How can you group students across the classrooms in any particular grade? The, what you do with it is the essential work that we have to do to continually improve the level of instruction that all students are getting in the district.
Okay, thank you. And then just my last comment is that I, that was my last question.
[laughter]
When we, when we do the data breakdown, so I'm not asking any questions about that, waiting for that more in-depth and having the staff here to answer the questions, but we usually got this broken out by high school, and so I, it was just the printing off of the college board report, correct, Ms. Gerber? Yeah, so that, I would hope that we could get it broken down like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Llewellyn.
A couple of quick questions. On page 16, number 29, you had noticed, you had stated that you had asked some questions to the state, and you were waiting for clarification. What were those questions?
The main question that, that, that they asked of us when we were there had to do with open choice, and it had to do with our calculations that were in the plan. And when we came back, we recalculated, sent those to them, and said, we believe that we are correct. Would you please have your statisticians tell us if we are not?
And that was, okay.
And we haven't heard back.
And then what was the, what is the status of the McBrue McBride update?
Actually, we were in a discussion just today, trying to get a meeting so that we can have the first presentation, we hope, October 24th.
Perfect, okay, thank you. My next question, actually, this is more of a comment, which I think is going to be very helpful for those students who were at Ludlow. Ms. Maxon Connolly helped clarify it for me. But on number one, the postgraduate survey indicator, I had a lot of perplexed questions from folks as to why seniors were receiving the surveys about how well they had learned in col, you know, or how prepared they were for college while they were still seniors. So the fact that, you know, the Ward ones went out correctly in the wrong list for Ludlow, I think kind of is going to set at least half the parents' minds at ease. So that actually is very helpful, thank you. In terms of the extracurricular participation, one of the thoughts is, you know, I mean, I would assume each club, or at least each sport, has a roster of students. So if every student signs up on the electronic roster, that should eliminate any work that needs to occur. It's just a matter then of cross-referencing names.
Well, I think it sounds really easy.
Sounds easy.
Yeah, with 3,000 students, it's not easy. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't have one system that when a student signs up for something, you know, that there's a system that would pull that data together for us. I was just pretty, it was, I think it was an overwhelming task for us to do, understandably.
Oh, it does if it's manual, for sure.
So that's why, yeah.
I was just thinking, if we had, if all, like, all rosters had to be set up online, it makes it quite simple.
Yeah, there's definitely got to be a way to automate it. We just haven't figured out yet.
Okay. And then to follow up on a comment that was made earlier about the calculus A, B, and B, C, you know, I would suggest you look at the years kind of prior to 2012 to see what the trend was, because I believe 2012 was the year that we introduced CPM and the group-based math, and regardless of what the, you know, total exams taken are or were, that the trend is, is quite linear. So to look at, you know, prior to the implementation of the CPM, what was happening, might be an indication that's a change in teaching methodology.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Patton.
Just several questions based on one item on page 11, the implementation of professional learning and teaching in the block to high school teachers. So I know we had official professional development prior to Dr. Jones's tenure and the implementation of the change in schedule that summer. So I know now, and last year we tried, as you've said here, we've had workshops. So do we know, like, what percentage of teachers participate in the workshops? How many are, you know, how many are offered, that sort of thing?
I personally do not have a list of the workshops, but we can certainly follow up and see if there is a list. I'm not sure.
Okay. Because I'd be anxious to see, you know, certainly we hope that that, you know, whatever was offered, you know, in, after the first year, and what's going to be offered this year would hopefully be, you know, dropped and be a lower percentage, because, you know, teachers have finally figured out, you know, how to, how to teach dynamically with all that extra time.
I think, can I just say too, I think part of that, if you look at the component in here about common plan and getting colleagues together, you really can't teach on a block unless you have excellent plans, or it's really tough, put it that way. So by having common planning helps, that's part of learning to teach on the block, is working with your colleagues to get lesson plans that are great for that amount of time.
Understood. I think the issues that we had heard about from, from parents throughout the last, last several years related to foreign language and socialized curriculums, I think, more, which are, you know, tend to be a little, a little looser, and, you know, some teachers filled things up with, with movies, or, or, you know, other sorts of things, because they weren't too sure, you know, how to get through the, the material accurately and efficiently. So I guess that the next question, kind of segue into that, is have there been issues continually reported in terms of, I guess, more the sciences and math about completing the curriculum within the block schedule? There were, there were some in the beginning and not, not as many, I think, last year?
You know, I can only say from my perspective, because I do hear most of the complaints. I haven't heard one, so knock on wood, that doesn't mean I won't get one tomorrow, but I think things must be going really well.
When, so when, again, back to the workshops, when are those, are those offered during actual professional development time, or are those offered, you know, after hours? Or like, when does that happen?
Professional development happens anytime, really. It could be a colleague going to observe another colleague, and you're covering their class, definitely on the Tuesdays, when we, they stay after longer, and we have professional development on Tuesdays, our full-day professional days, and then just on early release stays in general. So it's any of those components that are in the calendar. When you look at the calendar and you see those early releases and the Tuesdays, all of those are highly valuable for professional development.
So, but if there's, but if it's a volunteer kind of thing, where a teacher says, all right, you know what, I need some, you know, help here, and, you know, fellow colleagues are offering these workshops, those workshops are offered during regular professional development?
Well, I can just give you an example. When I was at Ward last spring, and they were having an afternoon where it's not like it was an option to not go to anything, just to say, ah, I don't need professional development. They're offering a menu of opportunities where teachers could choose what they felt they really needed for their own professional growth. So maybe it was Google Classroom, and they really wanted to spend time on that, because that's where they wanted, they wanted help from the person who's a specialist with technology. And maybe it was, you know, a component of their project-based learning, or something else that a teacher was offering, they could choose, but it didn't mean that they couldn't engage in anything. They had to be somewhere.
Okay. And I guess lastly, again, still related, so do we know, or is there any kind of, you know, unofficial report, percentage-wise, that we could, that we could get that would, you know, show us teacher, or, you know, percentage of teachers that have had issues versus that you know, show us teacher, or, you know, percentage of teachers that have had issues versus that still have issues, you know, in terms of how that's, how, you know, those things are being addressed?
I think it's always great to get staff feedback. We did not have it as part of this district improvement plan to survey the staff, and that's the best way, is just to ask them.
Right.
So certainly, we could do that.
Okay. Just even anything kind of, you know, general information that you could give us. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing, and I'll make one comment. When we adopted the district improvement plan, I was one who felt that we were trying to track too much data, and that every number that you ask for is some staff person's load of work, which takes them out of focus of, with the students. So I will just say that I will probably continue to express that viewpoint as to what do we need to know to impact positive change among our teaching staff that benefit our students, and what is nice-to-know information? And so I hope in November, when we look at this again, or the successive months when we're revising this, that we'll take that into consideration as we, as we always come up with ideas on what to add for data. But we don't seem to be coming up with ideas as to saying, well, this was nice, but we really don't need it. Let the staff deal with that data. At the board level, we really only need X. So I just make that as a comment, not a question. With no further comments, thank you very much. We will look forward to further discussion at the November board meeting. First reading of the 2018-19 school calendar, enclosure number two. However, you know that, I think board members are aware, that a revised calendar was put out to address the question about Veterans Day. To my knowledge, that is the only change that was made to the calendar between now and when you received it in the original board packet. This is the first reading. Dr. Jones, do you have comments?
No, just that is the only revision. And I think you'll know, it's, this calendar is similar to calendars we've had in the past, except I would say we've tried to be a little bit more strategic about some of the early release or the professional days to put them on where it's either good for family or good for staff. The February 15th is a new day that was highly requested. When I first came last year, I heard about this, that the staff really felt like that time of the year was exhausting for them, and it was something that we used to have. And funny enough, I, somebody had given me a calendar when I first asked for the calendar, and I was like, this wasn't our calendar last year. And it happened to be one that was really old, when we had the whole week off in February. And so, and that gave me the history of, okay, now I know where this has come from, what a migration that must have been to go from a week off. But staff have said that that's something that could be really important to them, and I think a morale booster. And when we surveyed our district leadership team, and they had an opportunity just to put comments on the calendar, just making sure the calendar was working for elementary, middle, and high school, and that comment was very prevalent, again, just that we really wish we would consider making sure we have that day. It means a lot to the staff. So I think it's a good calendar, and it's, again, we've tried to not have it as sporadic, because last year we did add some, some early release days that were more targeted on Tuesdays, but it also made, it made it a little bit more disjointed for families. So those are just the comments that I would have in general.
This is not an item for vote tonight, but at a next meeting. Ms. Pitko. And then Ms. Gerber.
Okay. I have an issue with having three parent-teacher conferences days in a row, for a couple of reasons. One, I'm a teacher. I think that three half-days in a row disrupts learning. Also, it, it is sort of an inconvenience for parents to try to find daycare for their, someone to watch their child three half-days in a row. And also, as a teacher, for 10 years, who did parent-teacher conferences three days in a row, depending on the time of those parent-teacher conferences, I went three days without seeing my kid. So if we could please break those up so that they're not all in consecutive three days, that just kind of like made my heart heavy to see those, knowing what I had endured for 10 years, and also knowing what it was like to teach a 20-, 30-minute class period three days in a row. I had some students who just didn't show up because it was a half-day. So that makes me a little nervous.
And you're talking specifically about the days.
October, in October, March.
October. Just wanted to clarify that. October and March?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gerber.
Okay, I just, so basically to clarify, so what you've done that's different from, say, the, this year's calendar, is that Friday, the 15th of February, will now be a day off, and that prof, full-day professional development day has been moved to Tuesday, May 28th.
Right.
Right. Now, what is the purpose of the early dismissal on the Friday, the 24th?
Sorry.
Of May, I'm sorry.
I think that that was just an early dismissal before going to Memorial Day weekend. I mean, that was just.
Is there any reason behind it? Like, did we have a high absentee rate on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend?
No, not necessarily. I mean, I think it was just trying to get, it was, again, thinking about families that want to get on the road, or go do something for Memorial Day, and it was trying to think about where can we put some of those that are strategic, to be a family-friendly calendar, and then also a staff-friendly calendar.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I totally agree with that. I, I just, because we have, I mean, I understand more clearly, because we changed it a couple of years ago, the early dismissal right before Christmas, the 21st, on this calendar. But I, you know, a lot of people do stay around for Memorial Day weekend, because they've got tournaments, they've got sports, they've got the parade on the Monday. So I don't know if that's necessarily the case, and it would be one thing if we had had a big issue with absenteeism, because I think that actually did drive the Friday before Christmas discussion and change. But I'm just not sure that, especially now with the Tuesday off as well, I, I just, I, I'm not sure about that. And then my other question was about October. You say, early dismissal pre-K through 12, PSAT on October 10th, conferences, but high school doesn't have conferences.
They don't have conferences, and there are two, two uses that those could be used for. One could be for a parent that actually wants to come and see their teacher, but the other thing is, we have two high schools that are also in NIESC, and so trying to make sure that we have built in some extra time for them as well.
Okay, 'cause that, I'm just not sure if we needed to have three early dismissals for high school. You know, I mean, the PSAT, I understand, but the two additional ones, I mean, I get the K through, K through eight, because they have conferences. But especially if, you know, as Ms. Pitko said, if, if there was going to be a change to switch, like, I'm not sure Friday is necessarily the best, best day for conferences, so if it was switched to another week, I don't know. I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, and.
Yeah, our previous calendar had that third one on another week, but from our perspective, it was, we were having a day off every single week, which seemed harder on our families than having the three in the row, if we needed three in a row. So it's, you know, I guess it depends whose lens you're looking through, but certainly you could move one of those to another week, but it just divides up another week where you don't have a full week of instruction, and its parents have to, three weeks in a row, find somebody to help them.
Right. And I'm sure if, if you could just clarify, so you're saying with the, the high schools, that those two additional early dismissals were for NIESC?
They could be for NIESC, and they also could be if a parent wanted to have a conference. We had discussions.
But we can have conferences with teachers anytime we want.
Right, well, you can at elementary, too.
Right. But, so I'm just not sure if you would need to formalize having those two additional high scho, high school days off. And I'm just speaking as a high school parent, but, you know, I'd be interested to hear what the rest of the board has to say on that. Thank you.
Any other comments from board? I'm going to skip over Ms. Pitko, because she's already spoken, Mr. Acer, Mrs. Max and Canelli, and then I'll come back to Ms. Pitko.
Sorry. I'd just like to say that I kind of agree with a lot of the comments that were just made, especially Ms. Gerber, Mrs. Gerber's, and with what Ms. Pitko said, the three days in a row, it, I don't, I don't think it's a good choice. I, I can see where you're coming at, coming at it from, but I think that it is a, a big burden on the families in town, so I would like to explore splitting that up. With regards to May, I kind of agree on the early dismissal on the 24th. If anything, I'd rather see that full day on the 28th moved to the 24th, potentially. I don't know if the teachers would like that, but.
I think what I'd have to check, and certainly we can go back and do that, is because the, the whole district leadership team weighed in, we also want to look at when makeup exams for AP. I just don't know it off the top of my head, but it's usually that week. It's right around in there, so we just want to make sure we haven't taken away a day we may need.
Okay. I'm just thinking logistically for the families in town as well, so. So definitely with October and March, I think that needs another look. Please.
Thank you. Mrs. Max and Canelli.
Just a few things quickly. I completely agree about October 11th and 12th, at the very least. Should, I mean, breaking up the three days, I think, is to be considered, but I would not be in favor of October 11th and 12th being early released for high school. I mean, there's no replacement for the fall semester in covering high school curriculum, and losing that time, I just, I don't think it's advisable. I also would be curious about what is the SAT day, and if that's, you know, where that falls in April, if we couldn't use that March 12th early release day and combine it with the SAT day in terms of professional development, and thus get in another full day of class, if in fact, and I can't recall, and I see the headmasters here, do they also release early after the SAT day? Or does that then go into classes?
I hate to do this to you, but if you could come forward, since it's more of a extended comment, introduce yourself and, and then answer. Now, I think our headmasters flip a coin back in the back row.
We try to do that, yeah. So David Ebling, the headmaster of Fifth Ward, the Connecticut SAT day is just 11th grade. So we'd have a full day of school. We only test our 11th graders, and our other students are in class. And then when the 11th graders complete the testing, they move back to their scheduled class.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I still think it presents a possibility, but that's just off the top of my head. I'm also not in favor of May 24th as early release. This is the school year. I understand family, but I think May is actually a time where Fairfield families, by and large, are staying home, and if a parent chooses to leave, because they're going away for that weekend, that's fine, but that's not our job. That's their, if they choose to pull them out. I also just want to clarify that, right now, the way this schedule goes with eight snow days, that would have a last day of school on June 24th? So that as of June 24th, if there were an additional snow day, that's when it's coming out of the April break?
Right. If there are snow days.
Correct. So that if it goes to day nine, and, that's what I wanted to check on.
Yeah. I guess, since we did add, because this calendar that we have doesn't have Veterans Day added, so now the last day of school would be the 13th, so you'd probably want to change it to the first seven snow days we'll extend.
You've got the corrected one on your desk.
Yeah, I don't have the corrected one.
I don't.
Okay, so I definitely think, I mean, if this is the, the draft we're working off of, and this is what we see the next time it comes up, I mean, I think we'll have some conversation and possible suggestions for changes, but those are some initial thoughts.
Ms. Pitko.
Through the chair to Dr. Jones. My question is, last year, I was under the impression we were going off of the regional CES calendar. Did we do that again this year to stay with the April break that other school districts were doing?
We, we did not actually go by CES calendar. If we did, we would actually be in school on Veterans Day. But I, as far as spring break, we look at that Easter weekend, we look at all of those components, and that's when we were looking at our April break, more so than CES calendar.
Okay.
Other questions from board members? So this will be on an agenda for the, for a vote. In the past, board members have come the night of the meeting and put forth a motion to change something in the calendar. And on behalf of staff who have to then quickly answer the question, is this doable? What's the impact? And there's a lot of, a lot to scheduling classes, as well as the school. And so I would ask board members to tell us in advance what you are going to propose, if anything, so that the staff have enough time to look at it and give you an analysis as to the pluses and minuses of that impact. If, if we had a protocol, a past practice of saying, unless you present it in advance, I won't accept the motion. But we don't have that practice. All I can do is ask you, please, if you do have a suggested change, once, I'll say, the revised schedule, if it is revised, is sent to you. Dr. Jones will take into consideration the conversation at the table, and may be making changes based on that conversation. But if you don't see the change that you were concerned about, then certainly you ought to let Dr. Jones know in advance, so that we are ready for a, a good discussion, both among the board, but a good response from the staff. Mrs. Gerber and Mr. Patton.
Well, just with that in mind, I did just want to make sure that one thing that would be looked into would be switching that full professional development day from the 28th to the 24th.
I think all of the suggestions will be looked at.
Okay, so all of, all right, I just want to clarify that. So, and we'll be getting a revised version of this calendar, perhaps, or not? What, like, by when will we get a heads-up, I guess is my question.
I don't want to commit the superintendent, but, you know, five days before the next, the board meeting where this is voted, is when we normally send out material, and if there is revisions, I would think that there would be a memo that says, we've looked at the calendar, and we've adopted the following revisions, and perhaps another paragraph that says, we looked at this, and we're, we aren't recommending that, so that the board would be fully aware of what was accepted, if anything, or what was not. So I would see it that way.
Okay, thank you.
And if your suggestion did not end up in that memo, that's because maybe the note wasn't understandable that we took, and feel free to remind Dr. Jones of, of the suggestion if it doesn't come forward. Mr. Patton.
I was going to mention the same thing about May 24th and 28th, but related to that, through the chair to Dr. Jones, at a previous meeting, we talked about adding the full professional day in May, and why in May so far. Can you just reiterate why we would have, or you, the staff would want that extra full day there, again, as opposed to adding it into February?
Well, we actually, you know, we had a little bit of a trial run last year with June, the June 6th date, and it was actually, especially in elementary, a very productive professional development day, because all of your testing is over, you kind of feel like you can see the end of the year, it's a great reflection time as well. So we wanted to try to keep something in kind of that area after testing and assessment was over, especially now that we are not spending as much time with summer curriculum writing and things like that. It's, it's a great reflective time of the year. And you actually, staff aren't as, I'm going to say, high-stressed, because the high stakes testing is over. Anyway, we found it very productive. When we were looking at this February date, that, again, a lot of the leadership, but as well as I'd heard it from teachers last year, really felt like that Friday needed to be off for staff, as well as kids. So we needed to place it somewhere else, but we wanted it to be somewhere where it was going to be really beneficial. And originally, we were looking at it in June, but then the high school preferred that it not be that late in June.
Okay, thanks. That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you. So we'll look forward for this at the, for, for future vote. Onto item C, discussion of Board of Ed 2018-19 budget challenges and priorities. This is the time that we have normally asked board members that if you have a budget concept that you would like the superintendent to consider in adopt, in looking at developing the 2018-19 budget, to bring the concept forward, not necessarily to debate it now at this table, but to at least bring it forward so the superintendent is aware of it. And if you hear somebody's idea, and you say, yeah, I like that idea, I'll diddle that, that probably is enough of a comment that will allow Dr. Jones to have a sense from the board as to what is, what is important. So, having said that, do any board members wish to make a comment about the 18-19 budget that Dr. Jones can take into consideration for guidance in developing it? And then after I wait a long time to make sure there's any comments, I'll ask Dr. Jones if she has any specific challenges that may be faced, that she's aware of at the moment, that, that she'd want to bring the board up to date on. Mr. Patton, followed by Mrs. Max and Canelli.
I don't have anything to add for this year, but I just actually wanted to thank Dr. Jones for, it was one of the suggestions that I kind of pushed her on last year, on, which was figuring out a way to do more professional development. And then, of course, we had all our budget crisis, crises, and so, again, I just wanted to thank you for, you know, massaging the calendar a little bit last year and more this year, and to figure out how to, you know, with the staff, add more professional development with little to no cost to the district. So thank you.
Mrs. Max and Canelli.
Okay, a few things. First, in terms of priorities, certainly weighing heavily on my mind, because I know it comes with an enormous price tag of science, and as far as I know, probably the materials are not ready. And as far as I know, probably the materials are not ready. So I, you know, as we get ready to roll this curriculum out, which I think is gonna be a lot of work in the implementation, I do want the summer support there for that to work because that's obviously not just a change of materials and not just a change of content, but it's a whole instructional methodology. And I, all I can do is voice those words. I don't know exactly what it looks like, but I just know that's going to need some support and that's a really important area for us. I would also hope that as part of the budget process, we get some form of internal analysis of how the central office changes have gone. Obviously, there was that freeze put into place. I don't know what the form that analysis would look like, but just in terms of what was lost, what was gained from the efficiencies, I think that it's important for us to have a sense of that. I would be very, one thing in the district improvement plan that has not come up yet as, not, at least not in the academic areas, but something that we as a board voted to add to that was the idea of content-specific professional development. And that's not something we have, we, there have been areas, for example, in mental health where I know we've brought in professionals to do that, but not in the content areas. And I think that might be an area that in order to do that, it might be a great time to perhaps collaborate with neighboring districts and bring someone in to make that more affordable depending, but that was a vote, all right, I know I put forward the amendment for that, so I was personally vested in it, but I really think that's important for our teachers. And then finally, I had a question about world language because in looking over the Ward Alumni Report, that was one of the, and, and it's, it has a, had a few data points in terms of students in college not feeling sufficiently prepared in world language. However, then you look at their AP scores and that doesn't quite match that. And then there were the scores that were missing, which you commented on when you were going through the district improvement plan. And we're also in the midst of trying to consider exactly what we want that direction to take. So I'm, that's sort of, I know it's a big open field there, but in terms of putting money behind that, you know, I would be curious if the staff at Ward could have some thoughts on why our students might, may have felt that way because there certainly was a good range of, you know, honors and AP students, and I don't know if they were in those specific area, content areas. But there was a lot of interesting information that alumni survey, an awful lot to be proud of. But world language is something that we have been considering and, you know, mulling over exactly what direction we want that program to take. I know the leadership was very excited about the program they brought before us and how they vested it in the AP, I just remember the Venn diagrams they had, but, you know, so that's just something I, I would really like the district to make a kind of decision on that so we can set a path forward, but taking into account all of those things, again, from the scores to the alumni report to whatever was in the district improvement plan. And even if we're not funding it yet, what is the direction we want that to take?
If I can make a comment on world language, the last time we had significant discussion on this where the board said, we, we want to do this, so let's get to work at it. We have two new board members who have joined the board, and in November, we'll have three more new board members that have joined the board. And so it probably is a good time in November to reaffirm this board's commitment to that or not. And so for those who may be in the audience, who may be joining our board in November, they ought to be prepared to engage in that kind of a conversation. Any other questions on budget challenges and budget priorities that people wish to make? Seeing none, Dr. Jones, do you have any comments that you want to make on challenges?
We have a lot of challenges. Doesn't mean we don't have priorities, but I do think this is going to be an incredibly difficult budget year. And under superintendent's report, I was just going to mention, just because I think it's good to mention at every meeting where we are as of today, and we still don't have a budget at the state level, which is making it incredibly difficult in the current budget. So we have frozen about $2.3 million just for unforeseen, not knowing what's going to happen. I think going into next year, we're anticipating that just your fixed costs alone, you know, are almost $4 million generally. And so when you look at things like insurance increases, just things that are unavoidable. So looking at like science, we're already looking inside the budget right now to say, what are we funding this year that we're going to be able to shift to make science happen next year on the implementation? We fully expect to do that, but it is going to be a challenge. And that's one of the reasons we didn't just list budget priorities, it says challenges, because I really think it was important for just the board to think about it. Sometimes we get to look at this as an opportunity to put a lot of extra things in. And right now, it's really about sustaining the great system that we have in all of the unknowns. So it's gonna be a challenging budget for sure.
Any questions for Dr. Jones? Mrs. Gerber.
I don't know, through the chair to Dr. Jones or to Ms. Mencel. I was just, I just pulled out the budget preparation manual for this current year. Are we going to be getting another one of those? Because I think that this is really helpful. I use this a lot just in terms of, you know, being able to look things up, and it has a lot of information. And I know it comes out, I think, in late October, early November. I couldn't remember, I didn't have a date on it. But I just think this, especially considering the fact, you know, if we will be having new board members coming on board, I think it's really helpful to have this to utilize, so.
We've been working on that, and actually, it was in draft last week, should be coming out of draft.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? If none, we'll move on to superintendent's report. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm doing two things at once. Approval of the minutes, thank you very much. Recommended motion, the Board of Education approved the minutes of the regular meeting of September 26th, 1947, 1947, that happened to be the year I was born, sorry. 2017, do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mrs. Pitco? Seeing no questions, all in favor of the board minutes of September 26th, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, opposed? This is Lou McCormick and Mr. Lou Allen, seven to two. Thank you very much. Now on to superintendent's report.
So I was gonna mention the budget, but I already did that, so I'll mark that off. Just, I want to say congratulations to Osborne Hill, who did, had a great diversity week. And there's actually a picture on our Facebook page of one of the activities. But in the past, they've had a diversity day, and this year, they moved it to be an entire week. The PTA was really instrumental, purchased particular books that were used in the classroom with a lesson plan that teachers could use. And it was multicultural diversity as well as special needs. It was really, really well done. And I had the opportunity to go there on the Friday and see all of the activities. And I just want to, you know, congratulate them. I know they're presenting, I think, or sharing at the PTA Council next month, and I'm really looking forward to that. Also, just, this is kind of what we call Pink Out Week, and you heard the students talk about their shirts. I know at Ward, they have pink shirts. And Mill Hill raised almost $1,800 this week, and there's a great picture of them on the Facebook page as well. So lots of activity across the district in support of breast cancer awareness. On, at Tomlinson, where I want to say thank you to not only the principal and the staff and the students, they've been so patient to not have their gym or the turf field. It's bad enough when you don't have one, but not to have either one. And the gym is reopening this week and turf field is close behind, so we're really thankful to them that they have just been delightful and patient. Just as a note, the Sherman Field is closed now, and that will be closed until spring. And again, that's an enhancement that the city Department of Public Works is, is working on to enhance that field. And they have to get all, everything done before winter hits and then it sits until it'll be ready in the spring. Also, we just have, we did, I mentioned earlier, we did our walkarounds as the administrative team and just, it was really, it's just wonderful to be out in the classrooms and see all of our teachers and the great work that is happening on behalf of our children. So I just want to say thank you to all those teachers. We have a lot of teachers who have opened their doors to us, just already this school year, and it's just been terrific. So great start to the year. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Jones on the topics she brought up? Committee liaison reports. Ms. Pitco.
Hi, so I'm gonna give an update on SEPTA, our Special Edu, Special Education PTA. The next meeting is Wednesday, October 25th from seven, at 7:30. It's actually, the location for this meeting's changed to Fairfield Ludlow High School in the library. Representatives from the Westport, Weston, and Fairfield YMCA to speak about special Olympics programs. They offer a Fairfield Adaptive Rec Director and other local groups to outline activities and opportunities in their programs for students with special needs and how to get involved. The next meeting after that is Wednesday, November 29th at 7:30. That one will be back at McKinley. Rehab Associates is going to be joining us to talk about their specialty caregiver course. The next SEPTA Teen Social Group is October 27th from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. This is a place for middle school and up students to meet, supervise socializing and fun. They meet with friends, swim, shoot hoops, play games, listen to music. There are a bunch of community programs, Making the IAP Work, Tuesday, October 17th. That one's actually through the Stratford SEPTA, and it's at Worcester Middle School. And Storm Hockey, Southern Connecticut Storm Special Hockey, dedicated to providing children with the age five and up with a developmental disability opportunity to play ice hockey. It's a therapeutic program, teaches skating and ice hockey skills, as well as give the player the opportunity to play a team sport. And it's at the Wonderland of Ice, and there's multiple levels. If you go on the SEPTA's website, you can get the link.
Any questions for Ms. Pitco? If not, who else? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Yeah, PTA Council had their first meeting yesterday, and I have the opportunity to say something right now that probably nobody else at this table ever will, which is, please ask them for money. That PTA Council, as one example, has set aside $100 per elementary school for schools that have existing garden programs. So it's not startup, but if you have a program, they have a fund that's waiting. Obviously, I'm directing this at the board, and feel free to publicize it, but especially to anyone, any PTA reps listening. They also have over $30,000 available in different categories for grants, waiting for schools to apply for it. It can be joint programs, safety initiatives, there's a whole host of things that would qualify for that money. Please, PTAs, ask for it. They're there to help and to help fund some really amazing programs, and every year, some of that money goes unspent. And so it's just nice to be able to say that.
Any questions for Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli? If not, any other liaison reports? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, the Ludlow Building Committee is meeting tomorrow, but last week, the Chair of the committee went before the Board of Selectmen just to give him, them an update on how things are going, and they're basically fine. So nothing, nothing new to report there, which is a good thing. They're just gonna be paying some invoices tomorrow night.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Gerber? Any other, Mr. Patton?
Just a meeting update. The ever exciting Board of Health meeting, which is normally the first Monday of the month, is moved to next Monday at the Sullivan Independent Hall, during a blank, next Monday at 7:30.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Patton? If not, any other comments from committee liaison reports on the custodians?
Yeah, the, we had a six and a half hour mediation meeting for the custodians, but I believe we are headed in the right direction in terms of being able to bring a settlement to the board soon. So I will keep you posted on the details on that.
Our next scheduled meeting is October 24th, so please watch for whether we might have an executive session prior to the normal starting time. Anything else? I'll only make a comment on the Ad Hoc Committee on Operational Effectiveness. Long word, ad hoc committee. As the board knows, and the community, I think, knows, last spring during the budget process, the Board of Finance asked both the town and the Board of Education to look seriously at what they termed structural changes that might lead to operating efficiencies. And so the board took that into consideration and adopted a process of this committee with both elected officials and community members on it. And their first meeting, as noticed, is this Thursday at 7:00 PM here in this room. The next meeting will be a joint meeting with us on the 24th, and then, of course, they will meet on Thursdays at the call of the chair. I'll again reiterate, I've gotten comments from people that, oh, this is just the board chair setting up a committee that is gonna say, there's not gonna be really any change. You're just going through the motions. I've also had people concerned that, oh, this is just the board chair setting up a committee to close a school. We do hope, I do hope, that the membership of the committee will address questions honestly, be data-driven, look at the impact on student quality of our education system. And as far as I'm concerned, there's no hidden agenda, there's no preconceived notion on the part of the superintendent or this board chair as to where this committee may end up. We just, at the moment, are saying, let's get the best information available and present the pros and cons. This committee is not going to be making decisions because they're gonna present, present information to the Board of Ed, and it's the Board of Ed's responsibility to actually implement any quote, "structural change." And again, those who are on the board and will remain on the board, and those who are on the board but won't, should feel free to participate on those meetings. And new board members that may be running for office should be aware of the seriousness of this group. I had hoped the membership would be fashioned a little bit quicker. Getting suggestions from people from various entities has taken a little bit longer than I had anticipated. So hopefully, I'll be able to give the full membership list on Thursday, once I hear from one or two more groups. Open board comment?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
I know you just mentioned you're gonna give the full roster. Can you give a ballpark on where we are numbers-wise as far as filling it?
Doesn't at the moment.
Okay. And, okay, and will, like with other committees and everything, will there be an agenda, like posted online? Which website, where do people go to find that?
Yeah, thank you for asking. The agenda will be posted tomorrow morning, Ms. Brown, right? And after board meetings, there's a title for committees, and one of the committees now is Ad Hoc Committee on Operational Effectiveness. And so people who are looking to see what the agenda is and what materials might be posted there, they can look there. And so tomorrow morning, it, the agenda should be out.
One last question. Will it be like with others where there's an orientation this Thursday?
Yes, most of the first meeting relates to an orientation to the commission statement, to FOI, and to other things that while those who are elected officials may be familiar with, those who are not, may not be. So it's more of an orientation session. And as we, Dr. Jones mentioned, on the 24th, when there is a joint meeting, that's when we're expecting the Malone-McBroom report to be issued so that both the board and the committee kind of have a common jumping off point in terms of our enrollment projections. Any other questions? If not, open board comment. Any comments from board members that they wish to make? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Well, my comments have to do with the fact that kind of the ending, we're approaching the end of our four-year term, and the four years have gone by quickly. But given that I may be unable to attend the next Board of Ed meeting, which marks the end of my four years of service, I just wanted to prepare a few reflective comments to share tonight, if that's okay. It's very brief. First, I wanted to say what an honor has been to have been given the opportunity to serve on Fairfield's Board of Education. It's been a huge education for me from many respects. Having not been hugely political prior to my service, my eyes have been opened to how deeply entrenched and impactful the political landscape affects each of our lives, whether we realize it or not. I've done my best to always speak my mind, always keeping in mind that doing what is right does not always mean doing what is popular or easy. I feel that we have made some great strides during these last four years that came with many late nights, spirited discussion, and not without a little bit of drama. But as much as has been accomplished, so much more is left to be done. Despite that, I feel confident leaving, knowing that the ship is in good hands with our new superintendent, Dr. Jones, and her staff, whom I believe have vision, conviction, and compassion, and we're very grateful for that. While the challenges ahead are not small, if we remain disciplined in our pursuit of educational excellence and always lead with compassion and kindness, I have no doubt that in another four years, our district will be in an even stronger position. Thank you again to those who voted me into this position, and thank you fellow board members. members, for your tolerance in listening to my ideas, which were often divergent from your own. I hope you'll continue to do so for others who come here looking for help and solutions, or to simply share a different perspective, because I truly believe that when we embrace diversity, we will actually realize stronger outcomes in the end. So thank you.
Thank you. Shall we move on to public comment? Okay. This is a time for the public to address the board on agenda items only, that perhaps after hearing discussion, that you would want to make a comment. So anybody that wishes to come forward, please state your name and address.
I'm Bob Smore, I'm the president of the FEA. Just wanted to make a comment on two things. One, I want to thank Chairman Dwyer for his comments regarding the district improvement plan. His concerns about data, data collection, I think, are playing out in real time in the schools on a regular basis, and I think the volume of data we're collecting is impacting instruction because we're spending an awful amount of time on it. So I would ask that you be more targeted in your approach to what data is collected and only request the data that is most impactful in advising instruction. You know, any initiative we do, it takes time, and any time that we, we put toward that initiative is time away from instruction. The other thing I would say regarding the school calendar is two things. One, the staff is always grateful for any time between January and April because unlike other districts, we have to complete our PPTs by early April. And as a result, that January-through-April timeframe ends up being a real fire drill for all of us. So I would ask that this time that Dr. Jones has built into the calendar and that January through April timeframe be maintained. The other thing I would ask you to do is take a look at these half-days, just to make sure they're not adversely impacting odd days or even days disproportionately, because in the high school, we work on this odd-even calendar, and if, this year, for example, I think all of our half-days were odd days, which left a lot of instruction missing on certain classes. So if you could just check that out, maybe, I don't know if you got the odd-even calendar laid out for next year yet, but please keep an eye on that as you finalize this calendar. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak? State your name and address, please.
Dabney Bowen, 317 Vernon Hill Road. I just want to point out to the board that it might be worth considering families like my own who have family not nearby, that rely on holiday weekends to go visit family abroad and in other states, to keep half-days on Fridays. It makes it a lot easier. Thank you, Dr. Jones, for considering that. It does make it a lot easier for those of us who travel on those weekends to be able to leave early on Fridays and beat the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? If so, state your name and address.
Christine Vitale, 254 Vernon Hill Road. I had the same concerns just about the schedule in terms of the odd-even days at the high school, so I would appreciate also just getting that clarified. And really, my comment is just an FYI on the committee reports. There is $100 for each elementary school that SEPTA's giving to, for Diversity Week. So being that it's on the record, so if any schools are doing any diversity programs, please reach out to SEPTA for funding. Thank you.
Perhaps we could send a note out to the principals. Anybody else wish to come forward and so talk about an agenda item? If so, please state your name and address. Seeing nobody come forward, thank you very much. Onto adjournment. The motion is that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Carnell? Seconded, Ms. Carnell.
I was going to oppose.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.